That this is the new process we've gone to. In the past, each individual office would at some time during the year after they've been approved for new equipment, they would call the IT department and say, I need you to order that new monitor, that new desktop computer, whatever it might be. And then they would do it and then the bill would go to that individual department and then it would then be paid for by that. I really wanted to change it so that Rick did too, primarily because it was very hard to track how, you know, where the equipment was, how old it was. And so what we wanted to do is bring it all under IT. That was part of the reason that their IT budget was, you know, escalated like it did because we brought some other things from other departments over to it. So this is a good example of that and you'll see that the vast majority of these comes from buildings and grounds, the assessor, the clerk's office. And then this way, the nice thing is, is we can monitor it where it's at, what we bought, and if we need to replace things, it's a lot easier than going back and trying to find the invoices and that type of thing. It's all held inside of technology services at this point in time. So that's why the number is so big. As Rick said, there's just a couple of them. The library main, there's 14 computers that needed to be replaced. That was a pretty large number of 16,000. And then the dispatch office, 16,782 for that. And again, that goes back to the question we were talking about, about the 911 surcharge. What can we charge to that? What can't we charge? This is ones that we felt like we could not charge to the 911 budget. So we just, and again, all of this was approved as part of the FY22 budget.
In one of the, one of the papers we have, you bought a computer, a new pregnancy manager.
Laptop.
$5,000 for a laptop.
It's one of those rugged laptops, supposedly if you can drop it or get it wet in the storms and stuff, it'll hold up a lot better than the normal laptops that we bought. Yeah. Yeah.
Just to give you something to go against, I guess when I worked at the mine, we used to buy those from the shop, those, I think they were Dell's or something. We were about 10 grand into the laptops each, so he's probably not going with the most expensive model.
Well, that may be so much better.
Yeah, they can get spendy.
They can.
I think they're Motorola's. I think they're Roughbooks or Toughbooks or something.
Yeah. Each manufacturer's a little bit different, but yeah, some of them say you can drop them from up five, 10 feet.
Yeah.
But still, it's.
Drop them off of haul trucks.
Yeah. But you also pay for it.
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the purchase of the computer equipment as presented not to exceed $73,882.51.
Okay, motions on the floor. Any further discussion, questions?
Dave, this is coming out of special conference.
Yeah, it comes out of the computer services line item, which is computer equipment.
Yeah, 5291. It was all, all the items were listed in our large spreadsheet.
The reason I bring this up is we got, you know, we come in here at 73,000 and we're still at a tentative budget and we're $7 million over that tentative budget. So I just wanted to make sure that this isn't something that we just set aside up there and said, well, we're going to do it and they come back to us and say, well, it was in the budget. So.
Well, the budget's final. The budget's final for FY22. That was voted on in June, late June. So it was tentative up until that point in time. But yes, so that was part of what was approved. And these are computers that in most cases are five, six, seven years old.
I don't.
So they've just got to be done.
And if I have any, are you done? If I have any comments on this, I'm not sure I'm happy and satisfied with putting all these technical, whether it's computers or telephones or what, all under IT. It seemed to me that before, when we, say the library, they're spending $17,000 on one computer. Before that had to be in their budget and they had to figure out a way to make sure that their budget could cover that. Now they don't, they, they don't have to stick it all in their IT, and their budget is five times, three times of what it used to be.
We saw that last year and our budget system really didn't know how that had happened, that everything had been transferred to IT until we were in the middle of budgets. But the amount that was transferred wasn't deducted from the department budget in some cases. I know we saw that.
I'm not happy with that. I think that if library needs new computers, they need to fix it, figure out a way to figure it, put it in their budget. It's hard.
And I think, I, I understand what you're saying. They can still do that. That's why we have a cover sheet, B1 form. And they should put that in there to say, we are getting new computers, here's what they are. And they should put that in there and they should also explain and highlight that's part of the IT budget. So, and that number can be put in there. We can do it for them for that matter. So I like it just simply because we can track it better. We know who needs them when and because sometimes they get lost in somebody else's budget. The only reason we know about them is if a ticket comes in. And that's been a problem.
Well, it leaves it up to Rick to justify the need for those computers. It should be up to the library to justify the need.
I don't agree, I don't disagree with that.
And I appreciate this, Commissioner Hill. I appreciate you being transparent and, you know, showing us that stuff under 5,000. Like you said, it's, it's all there. This is what it is. I don't think any of us want to spend any money, but sometimes we have to.
Well, it helps us show you where the money's going.
Yep.
I mean, it's, we're spending it and you guys questioned my budget in the beginning of the year, so we're trying to be very transparent of showing you what departments have requested stuff and where it's going.
That's good.
And it's a lot easier in the long run for us to track it. And one of the other things is since it's all purchased under our account, Dale will send, send us notices on certain things. So it's a lot easier to track what's being done to each of the computers.
Makes it easier on you. We're not picking on you all the time. You're just servicing other departments.
Getting used to being picked on lately.
I mean, look at what the library's spending there. They've spent 24, almost $30,000 in computers and they put it all under IT's budget. I, did they, I don't recall them taking 30, 30,000 out of their budget from last year.
No, they did not.
This is a win-win.
We can ask Jessica that when she comes on here shortly.
Well, the only difference maybe, and I don't know for 100%, but her budget may have gone up, would have gone up 30,000 if it was actually under her line item.
Then we'd have questioned it, are these needs? We didn't get to ask that.
Okay.
Part of what they wants.
I guess another thing to look at is a lot of these computers are, are public computers. It looks like for the library, they are upgrades to, to a public computer for their front desk and checkout.
Yeah, and one of the, one of the big hurdles we're facing is a lot of them are very old and they operate on Windows 7. So for security wise, we can't use them. The state says absolutely not, cannot put it on your system for security reasons. We can't get updates. So the newer programs and newer software will not run.
Right.
There is, it comes to a point where a computer does have a life expectancy of averaging about three to five years.
And as a service to the public, I mean, if they go in there and they want to run a program that Windows 7 or it doesn't run, it's pretty useless to the, to the public going in there to use these PCs.
Okay. Okay, I guess there is a motion. All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes. Okay. B is authorize Horny Electric to modify the existing power at the new McDermott Public Safety Communications Site per their scope of work in an amount not to exceed $5,692. Discussion possible action.
So the, the idea on this is where we're proposing to build the new Public Safety Communications Site there alongside the water tank there in McDermott. The overhead power line needs to be relocated for us to be able to bring a crane in, do the towers and everything else. So the proposal is to move that main power line 85 feet to the west along the property line and then restring the overhead back to the pole that sits next to the meter panel. And this will get it, make it a clear overhead where actually the building and the tower is going to be located.
Overhead is the way to go and not trench it in?
Well, we, that was, we had several discussions on going underground. Horny Electric basically says, if you guys want it underground, you can boot, you can do that, but the county will be liable if there's any major repairs that have to be done to the meter panel and/or increase in requirements. That puts liability back on the county to pay for that. And I didn't think that was the good way to go, to lock the county in indefinitely to that liability being out there. So if it's overhead and we get hit by lightning and something happens, Horny Electric just replaces it. Trying to save a little bit of money and not lock the county into a permanent liability of repairs.
Cost wise, is there?
It'd have been boring to go underground, but yeah.
Okay. Chris, Rick on that.
This is Commissioner Hill. I'm sure you've looked at it, but is there, is there any other options to put this somewhere else where there's not that cost of moving a power line?
You mean the site itself?
Yeah.
We had, originally we were looking at right beside the library there in McDermott, but we have septic, underground water lines, power lines and trees that would all have to be modified and taken out, plus the site's about 100 feet lower on ground level. So moving it up to that location would get, gave us a better view looking north and looking south along the, the major highway.
Makes sense.
Now, if I'm not mistaken, we had money budgeted for the towers for Eagle Creek, right?
Correct.
And because we haven't got that cleared through PLM and everything yet, we'll use that money in the budget to build this tower.
Right. What we, what we did is we've got a million dollars that we put aside in capital projects for, just for the build out of the Public Safety Communication System. So I don't know what their exact number is yet. I don't think we've gotten that in, but we're probably going to spend 350,000 to 400,000, I'm guessing, up at McDermott for the tower, the radios, the install and everything. So this would be part of that. That's how that would be paid for. And then if we have, what we have left over, we'll, we'll see what's, what's out there and we'll make some decisions on where we're going to go next.
Yeah. Any other questions? Is there a motion? Go ahead, one of you other guys, take mouthful.
Okay. I'll attempt this.
On B?
Yeah. There it is. Okay, I'll be, make a motion to approve the Technology Services Department request for Horny Electric to modify the existing power at the new McDermott Public Safety Communication Site per their scope of work in the amount not to exceed $5,692.
Thank you.
Thanks for the save. Couldn't find it in all this.
Motion's on the floor. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Pass unanimously. Next is C, waive the attrition policy to hire for the vacant position of Technology Service Technician. Position is vacant due to a staff resignation. This position is a budgeted position, approved for fiscal year 2021-22. Discussion possible.
We just lost Carl Karlock to a resident nation and he was a very key player and team member on keeping things operational on the server ends and databases. We really need to get that position filled. We'll be getting pretty backlog if we do not. Going to miss him though.
So Mr. Chair, too, I just, I want to add, kind of give my thoughts to Carl. Carl has had some medical issues and that's why he's left. Went back to Las Vegas, but he was probably one of our most senior guys and really wanted to be here, but unfortunately for him, it didn't work out. So I just wish him the best.
He was great to work with.
Yeah, good guy.
I wasn't sure.
Smart guy.
Yeah.
Well, it's always a bad thing when you lose a key player like that. And that means a great deal to your, to your progress.
Well, I know how busy you guys are and how important it is to be fully staffed with, you know, all the work that needs to be done and all the things that need to be fixed. So we did, we did recognize that in our budgeting this year. We approved one or two new positions.
One.
One position. So I, I don't think this is probably a, a position, you know, there's any reason to see whether or not they can do without it. I think it's pretty apparent. It's why we approved another position for 2022 is because they need more help. So it won't do anything good to see if they can manage without that position.
And usually in the, in the hiring for the department, it runs an average of three months or more by the time they pass background and everything else.
You guys weren't so mean to them. Would be that bad.
I don't know if mean has anything to do with it. Making work that hard.
Okay, any other discussion on that? Not, retain a motion.
Mr. Chair, make a motion to waive the attrition policy to hire for the vacant position of Technology Service Technician.
Okay. Motion's on the floor. Excuse me, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, that passes unanimously.
Mr. Chair, we've got Andy here, he's ready to go, but I'm thinking, if Jessica Anderson, are you on the line? I don't see you on my list here.
Jessica Anderson, Humboldt County Library for the record.
Good, yes, thank you. He'll, he'll read the agenda item first, so.
Good.
Yeah, you're, okay.
Thank you.
So that's number 19.
Number 19, which is library appointment of board, appointment to the Board of Trustees, consideration, discussion and possible approval of Andre Bryant to fill the vacant seat of Mary Angus Bonney. On the Humboldt County Library Board of Trustees, that expired on June 30th, 2021. Term will be for four years and expire on June 30th, 2025. For discussion and possible action. Jessica, do you have anything you want to say about this?
So this is just for an appointment to the library board. There was only one applicant we were able to get, so the choice should be pretty easy.
Okay, just one applicant, okay. We had the letter. Anybody got any questions? Okay, if not, is there a motion to point to board member?
What is it here?
Item 19.
Who is it?
Yeah, I.
Andre Bryant.
I would make a motion, Commissioner Hill, I would make a motion that we approve the application of Andrea Bryant to fill the vacant seat of Mary Angus Bonney on the Humboldt County Library Board of Trustees.
Okay. Want to put in that four-year term?
Oh, yeah. The term will be for four years and to expire on June 30th, 2025.
Okay. Um, motions on the floor. All in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Okay, thank you. Passage unanimously.
Mr. Chair, can we go to Don Kalkowski? He's been sitting out there quite a while, so, and I think he's just got a basic overview update of, of the roads.
Okay. Sorry to miss that data.
I'm sorry, number 14.
Public Works Department, item 14, general road projects, a presentation by Humboldt County Public Works Director, Don Kalkowski, to update the board on road projects within Humboldt County. However, no action may be taken on a matter raised until the matter itself has been specifically included on the agenda as a item upon which action may be taken. Hello, Don, or do we have you on the phone, online?
I am. Good afternoon, Commissioners, Don Kalkowski, Humboldt County Public Works. Um, okay, so let's see, we've been mowing weeds all over the place. I think we started out in Kings River last week. We've done a bit of Jungle Road. We're doing some stuff around Paradise, Paradise Ranchos right now. What else? Just working on the Midas Road. We've been working on the last couple of weeks. It kind of, kind of took a beating. I think after we put down the mag this year, we got a pretty decent rainstorm out there. It held up for a while, but it's not holding up like, knock on wood, Jungle is. Jungle's holding up very well compared to, compared to Midas. But then again, Midas has new material on it and even though we hit it kind of heavy with the mag, it just didn't, didn't accept it as well. Let's see, what else? Out in the IO area, working, doing a lot of back slope work out there just because we're kind of light on water and moisture in the area. Just trying to get those back, back slopes cleaned up, able to develop some better, try to think, to limit fire, the clear zone or what, I can't even think of the words. Make the, make the clear area wider. What's that, Tom?
A brown line?
Well, that, that could be. I haven't heard that one, but just to make it clear, so we're, so we have a better defensible area if there is a fire out there. And then what else? Just kind of trying to, trying to keep everything going. It's just, it's been kind of tough with how dry everything is. We, we're still working on doing some shouldering and stuff out in Star City Grass Valley area on some of the paved roads. And we did, we did install a standpipe on the Star City Water System because now that we own it, we control it. And we did that to try and develop another water source for our road maintenance. And we actually had to pull that off last week or shut that down last week because we almost, we almost dropped below 20 PSI on the Star City Water System, getting water out of there. So it wasn't worth the risk of going below 20 PSI on the system for road maintenance. If it was a house burning down, I have no problem with that, but road maintenance, it just wasn't worth it to me. So we had to pull that off and so we're just using our typical fairgrounds and Honeywell and Walt Curtis has offered to provide us some water for B, which is understandable. So that's, that's about all I got. Anybody have any questions or concerns?
Did you ever, we approved a motor grader a while back. Have you gotten that yet?
Well, that's a really good question. No, but it has been ordered and I have been told that we should expect it by November, December this year. So it's a, the last one was three months out and if you recall, I think that was one of the first things we did after July 1st was get that motor grader going and we're, you know, we're good, almost six months out on it now. And I think it just has to do with all this computer chip stuff that's going on with all the other dealerships and processes, so.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions for Don?
Yeah, Don, this is Commissioner Hill. Do you have an update in McDermott on the sewer? I read Dave's weekly report and he, he kind of, I guess, probably gave me all the info that I, that you probably have, but do we have any updates there?
Well, it's not a road things, but yeah, I'll give you an update. So, um, uh, let's see, so I got the survey information back from Desert, Desert Mountain Survey last week before I headed out to Texas. I sent that to Dave, I believe he has forwarded that on to the engineer. Right now, they should be getting, putting those numbers together to give us some options of where we can go with that line or a new line and be able to connect those properties or at least the Alyssa Fogel property into. Um, let's see, I talked with Alyssa this morning and she is working on some other legal standpoints with regards to the existing line and it sounds like she's got a contractor online to hook that, where it was cut, hook that back together so she can go into, go back, open her businesses back up. So that's, that's what I know right now.
Thanks, Don.
You bet.
Did she go to court?
Uh, I don't know that she's had courts. I know she's been talking with Mr. McDonald's about the, this issue, maybe some others, but I, I'm not sure. I'm, I'm trying to stay out of that part of it.
Yeah, I just wanted to spot.
Good idea. Well, thanks for, for your report.
Absolutely. Anything else?
Or any other questions, Commissioners?
We've got to have.
Not seeing anything, Don, so thank you. Thank you for the update.
Absolutely. Thank you, guys.
So comptroller, we can table that because.
Table that.
Okay.
So we're at 22 and we're going to come back to Betty at the end here. She's got two items.
Just jumping all over. Okay.
Which, which number do you want to go?
Let's go to 22.
I guess so.
Okay, come on up. Consideration, discussion and possible approval to purchase a server to host assessor's GIS data outside of the assessor's GIS technician's workstation and to provide a cloud backup solution for disaster recovery, any amount not to exceed $35,500 for the server and the, and the cloud solution. This is for discussion and possible action. Hello, Andy?
Hello, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, good afternoon, Commissioners. So previously, we always had our data, our data on a computer for our GIS. The previous GIS technician did not want it to go away from her computer and we had whatever backup we had at that time, we're talking a long time ago. 10, 15 years is when we started this process. So my current GIS technician, it scared myself, it scared the previous assessor, so we, I purchased a new computer for her and thought, let's try to get this on a server for better backup. We had some. backup. We had some issues. I know I've discussed that with you guys about some data loss. So we currently are back hosting everything on her workstation. The, the loss started in September last year. We're not, we don't feel comfortable with the backup we have right now. So this was the best solution I could come up with to make sure this data's backed up. It's going to be backed up twice. It'll be backed up on our server and then also backed up to the cloud for any kind of catastrophic failure to the server. And I would open it up to any questions. I know Commissioner Hill has seen a little bit of a part of this, but our GIS system drives everything in our county. It holds all of our infrastructure, our city utilities, it holds all of our parcel boundary lines, road shape files, address points for E911. It holds everything. So if we lose, you know, this data, we've already had to re-go over five months' worth of data previously. So if we have to do that again, or if we have a complete loss, luckily, we had the old computer, or else we would have, I don't know where we would have been. We might have been starting over. So this is the best way that I can see right now to secure the data.
Understandable, I would say.
Andy, this is Commissioner Hill. So this $35,000 is to buy storage somewhere? Is that, is that what you're buying?
So it's, it's both. And I actually, I apologize that I didn't have a quote. I didn't have it in enough time to get it on the agenda. So that the, the amount has reduced. At first, the server alone is $20,000. That's installation, purchasing the server, all that. That quote now has come down to $11,170.69. So we're already $9,000 less than this amount than the $20,000. So that's for the server. The $14,000 is for the backup storage data. That's cloud. It's, they charge us by the terabyte or gigabyte, and that includes up to 10 terabytes worth of storable data. So that's, I think we're probably somewhere around two to three terabytes, and we're never, that's not a thing that increases a lot. So it'll pretty much maintain around that amount.
Is that an annual charge or one time?
Um, that's.
The cloud.
The cloud is an annual, it's a monthly charge.
Monthly charge?
Yes. It's $1,068 a month, and that's roughly what I pay for virtual tape backup that I have on the 400. So it's not out of the ordinary cost.
So where are you asking for 14, then?
Well, it'd be $11,000 for the server, and that's a one-time done deal. And then it'll.
And 14 will carry you for 14 months?
Well, there's a setup of 844, and then I just ran, it was 13 and some change. So I can compute that hard number not to exceed, if you would like. I just round it up to an even number.
So you're not to exceed now, it'd be $26,000?
And this is coming out of the Technology Fund?
This is coming out of my Technology Fund. It was not budgeted for, but I'm willing to, I'm going to cancel some things, move some money around, and work hard not to exceed my budgeted amount there.
Wendy Maddox, purposes of the record, Deputy DA. If you do move forward to approve this agreement, could you please make your motion subject to approval of the District Attorney's Office, as we haven't had the opportunity to review the agreement yet?
And that was on my staff report. Thanks for the reminder. So the not to exceed amount would be $24,830.69.
Okay. Is there any other questions?
I guess I just have a que, I know enough about this just to get myself in trouble, I guess. But I'm sure you've talked to Rick, and is there anything in our infrastructure or our network, or any of his backup data that we could utilize to, to store this data safely and efficiently versus, I guess, you going out and buying your own server? And I, I guess that's what I'm struggling with, is are we creating a whole nother network for the assessor's office versus what we already have in Rick's plans, I guess?
And, and I don't know if I did this, Andy Heiser, Humboldt County Assessor, for the record. Yes, it would be something that is provided. We currently have 14 days of backup, from what I can understand.
Okay.
And, and so that's part of it, is we went to ask for a farther back restore, and we never, you know, we, my GIS tech Sylvia said, hey, can I get a farther back restore? Then the two weeks, they said they'll see what they can do, and we never heard anything back. So I don't know if there's nothing out there. I don't know if they never, just never got back to us. It was presented that they are looking for a disaster recovery vendor to come in and work with them on this. I believe it's J4. If that's, I think that's come across you guys, your agendas prior. We had a presentation at the beginning of this month on Wednesday about that, and I've had some questions, and my questions haven't been fully answered. So for now, I'd like to proceed with this, so I can, I can make sure our data is backed up. I, I know that we were supposed to schedule some meetings coming up with them. I, I just, I don't know where we stand with that. I don't know how long that'll take. So I know that these guys are willing to move and, and move fairly quickly. Again, I, I don't know that full answer.
I, I guess with that being said, I, I don't want you to lose any data. I, I don't.
I don't want to spend $24,000 either.
Yeah, yeah, I don't want to see you lose data. But then again, I don't want to see us, for lack of communication or lack of whatever, that we create all these office networks or office, you know, storage places, when, when we really should be looking at the, at the goal of the whole county, keeping on to the same network or, or infrastructure, I guess, let's call it. I guess that's what I would struggle with, is, is that. Maybe we have other issues besides you needing storage. I don't know.
Mr. Chair, Dave Mindiola. So Andy and I have been discussing this for a while, and the problem is not so much, I mean, the communication issue, I, I don't really know that's a problem. The problem is we don't have the answers right now. J4, we did get approval from the, about a month ago, I think it was, to move forward with them. They're the consultant that's going to help us to design the backup disaster recovery system. It's amazing what a month changes things. So we were back to normal. We were setting up times to get together with them, and then all of a sudden, COVID hit, and now they're, you know, questioning when they can get out here. We've got, so that's the problem for Tim at this point in time, is that he can't guarantee when they're going to get out here, when they're going to design it, when we can actually have it online, which is probably the biggest issue. And so I think what Andy's saying here is that if it's going to be six months before we get that disaster recovery not only designed and implemented, that's too long for him. And because he fears that he would lose more than 14 days of data. It could be a lot worse. And so, you know, I thank you, by the way, Mr. Heiser, for coming and asking us about this, because I, I have the same concerns. I'd rather have it be on one system that's designed the way we want it. And, and so, and I think Andy would like the same. But in the meantime, we just don't have any solid dates when we can have that in place. And that's, that's the problem. And I, I know Tim and I have had many discussions about it, and he feels horrible. But until we can get that work done, and then we can, again, as you heard from Rick say, the equipment alone, we may not get it till April of next year that we need. Just like, say, well, they'll put this order that was just approved a few minutes ago, and, and they're telling us, they probably, we won't see it till April. So there's a lot of different factors that make it really difficult for us to tell Andy, hey, Andy, we'll have it a month, or three months. And I think in the meantime, Andy's, doesn't sleep at night because of it. So I.
I, I get it.
I feel bad about that.
And Andy Heiser, for the record, sorry to cut you off. I think six months is reasonable, but I don't know if that's going to happen. And $24,000 for six months is, in my opinion, a bad way to spend this money. So I, I, if I had an answer, I would, it would be an easy thing for me to say, yeah, let's hold off, we can manually back this up. Maybe they have something else that we can do. I, I don't know. But this issue has driven my GIS technician crazy for over a year now. And we don't have any answers of why it happened, and, and now we don't know when we're going to proceed forward. If it's six months, that's something we could probably work out. If it's going to be a year, I, I don't know. I, if, I mean, I don't know what it takes to lose data, but you lose it, and it's gone. And, and, and I, to recreate this would be, I don't know, millions and millions of dollars is my assumption to start over in our GIS department. That's, and that's my, it's the same with our costing. If we lost our costing system, I mean, I don't know what, $14 million or something is what we, you know, value as far as tax dollars come in, and 10 million, something like that. And, and so that's, that's something I'm not willing to lose data over.
Commissioner, this is, if I could speak.
Yeah, Tim, go ahead.
Yeah. So to the issue that Andy was talking about, it wasn't so much about the backup data not being there, but the way that we were storing the data is, you know, we didn't know at the time that it can't run on a hosted file server. So the data that Andy's talking about has to run specifically on that computer, and, and the network in transmission caused corruption to those files. So even if we go back to, we went back to like, like six weeks behind, but that didn't change anything, because the, the data was already kind of damaged from that point, because of how it's stored. So we moved it all back to the local machine, and, and this is right now running off of that. We have the equipment to, to back up that machine. And one of the things we were waiting on was those hard drives that we got approval for, I think, four weeks ago. So now we have like about 15 terabytes of data we can store onto our servers as the backups themselves, but still run the, everything from that machine. But, but we have the capability to do that. And to speak a little bit more broadly about the work with J4 systems is, they're, what they're helping us design is the, the run book and the kind of the full and complete guide on how we're going to handle backups for every department. There's just been some scheduling conflicts. So hopefully next week, or this week, I'll be sending out invitations for everyone to be invited and starting discussions next week. But, but that is a long-term plan that is going to help us look at our technology that we have today, and look at what we plan to purchase for the rest of this fiscal year, and make sure we're going in that right direction. And, and then let every stakeholder decide. So Andy can specifically say, I, I need this much data for backup for this long. I need it in two locations and a cloud service and things like that. We, we can revise those kind of things. And, but today, like, I could still, you know, run a backup on that machine and store that data for quite an indefinite time with our, the drives that we purchased. And we could also just look at hosting, or putting, backing that service up to the cloud service. The cost for the cloud service through, like directly through our Azure tenant would probably be about the same price, but for the cloud portion. But, but we do have the physical hardware to store data on right now.
Glad you asked that question, though.
Hey, Tim?
I am, I, I am.
Mr. Chair, Dave Mindiola. Tim, this equipment that, that the assessor wants to order, is that something that could be repurposed after the fact?
It's something that we could build into the disaster recovery plan, to see like, hey, we have this service, you know, this equipment here and this service, it could definitely be used and still just keep it specific to the assessor's office. That's, that's not an issue. No.
Okay. So in other words, we could use the equipment, once we get the long-term system fixed and the way we want for the entire organization, then we can transfer that over and that equipment can be used.
The assessor's office, any specifically in this case, would be, with, with the disaster recovery plan is the, we want the stakeholders, so we want Andy to say what his requirements are. So if he has that equipment, he can provide more strict and, you know, longer backup plans, and, and put that equipment into it, and then have that run book. So if something did happen, there's a process to recover it safely and efficiently.
Andy Heiser, Humboldt County Assessor, for the record. Wasn't, this script is where I kind of get confused, because wasn't that part of the issue with this current data loss that we were having, was the script wasn't working correctly?
No, it, it was specifically with how the, the Esri tool only works on the local workstation running it. So the database was being stored on a file server, and it wasn't properly writing data like it should have been. So it doesn't really matter how far back we went, because just the fact that it existed on the file server was the issue. And that's why, going back to her old machine, before we moved that data over, is the only point in time, because that's, that's the only point in time where it wasn't corrupted.
So how do, Andy Heiser, for the record, again, how do companies work off of a file share? Let's take a engineering firm. They have multiple GIS technicians pulling the same data off of a server. How come they're not having these same issues?
So the best I can say is specifically the Esri tools that are being used today, they, they are having those kind of issues. It's, it's something that me and Sylvia, we sat and talked about, and, and when we started doing some research on this, we, we discovered that this, this wasn't a problem that we've exclusively, exclusively dealt with.
Hi, this is Sylvia Leal, I'm the GIS technician for Humboldt County. And I just wanted to mention that, so there are file geo database that does contain, you know, our address points and our roads and a lot of that. That is now stored on my computer. And, you know, that would have, Tim was correct, that, you know, even if we had, you know, gone back longer than two weeks, we still, you know, may have had an issue. However, all of the data that we've lost previously, that would not have been solved by, you know, anything else. That was a sort of a separate issue. That's not GIS data we're talking about, you know, other databases that have been lost. You know, just a lot of different, different work that was lost outside of an Esri program. Thank you.
And I, Andy Heiser, for the record, I believe she's talking PDFs and just stagnant documents that were also not being stored on the server.
I always hate these discussions. I get lost.
This is Commissioner Hill. Tim, so I guess my main question is, do you guys endorse this workaround that, that Andy's proposing, and, and will you guys be involved in, in making sure it all works?
My, my long-term plan, I, I guess I could say I haven't seen this as a proposal to have any comment on it.
Will we be able to have a, Andy Heiser, for the record, will we be able to have a server that's not connected to the network that my GIS technician will have access to while still maintaining on the current county network and work between both of them if we have the correct software implemented on the server as far as security reasons go?
I haven't seen the current proposal, so I can't make any comment on it.
Again, Commissioner Hill, I, I don't want him to lose any data. I really hate for that to happen. But I also don't want to be doing a workaround that we're not, that our IT department isn't completely committed to and, and endorsing for this kind of money. I just, I guess that's what I'm struggling. what I'm struggling with. But also don't want to lose 14 million dollars worth of it.
That's, that's backed up. That's worse with that.
Okay. I, I guess that's what I struggle with is.
Wendy Maddox, Deputy DA, for purposes of record, would it be um, possible for us to table this item and maybe give Mr. Henning the opportunity to, to look at everything and see if he would be on board?
Well, I guess that is a very uh, good suggestion.
I guess a little more thought to that is if we're going to spend 26,000 or whatever, it's proposed right now at $35,000, but if the IT could get involved and say it's 40,000, but we can get five departments on board doing the same thing, then that's money well spent for the county versus just one workaround, I guess.
Both Andy's okay with it and um, I think we would be okay with that too, is just let IT and Andy get together and see if they can um, come back with a, come back again with a proposal, something, either this one or something different.
Mr. Chair, uh, Dave Mandiola, uh, Tim, can you give us a date positive that you could look at this and have answers so that when we do bring this back, um, that we'll have all the details and information and we can provide both pro and con to this thing?
I, I can review it this week and compare it against some of our, our long-term goals. Yep.
Okay, so if we tried to bring this back on September 7th, would you have all your answers and be able to provide a document that gives us the pros and cons?
If you give me a deadline, um, the 7th.
Yeah, I mean, I'd, I'd have to have it then.
Yeah, so uh, we'd have to have it by the Thursday.
That, well, it, usually it's 11 days prior to, but as long as we have the document, yeah, that Thursday prior to the meeting, which would be what, the 3rd? Something like that. I don't have it right in front of me, but um, that way we can hand it out to the commissioners and they can have a chance to look at it and we can walk through it.
Yes, I could commit to that.
And as much in layman's terms as possible.
Yeah.
Please, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's not that I necessarily agree or disagree, I just um, without seeing it, I, I can't make any comment on it.
That's understandable.
I would, I would appreciate it if maybe you could uh, attend the meeting rather than doing it virtually.
Yeah, I, I would agree.
Understood.
So Andy, this, if we delay this for another two weeks, is that going to be detrimental to your, I mean, I guess at any time?
It's already been a year.
Been a year, right?
Yeah.
I, I just hate to be the...
I, I, Andy Heiser, for the record, I would like to keep it in-house and on our network. I just haven't.
Been shown the...
We have 14 days, a- as far as what I've been shown, as far as a restore file, we've, we've only been shown 14 days back uh, with a file that we could implement back in.
Right. Okay.
Okay. Well, we'll table this and um, we really need to do it sooner rather than later. And if we can get it on uh, the next commission meeting, that would be ideal. Yeah. Thank you, Andy.
Thanks, guys. Thank you.
Thanks, Andy.
We did, shall we go back to the uh, public hearing?
14 and 15. As soon as we get a couple.
Chair, yeah, it looks like we've, we've lost a few, so I don't know if you would like to take a break.
Lost two commissioners, so we'll take a break. That would be 15 and 16 in mind is.
Uh, 14 and 15, I think. Oh, no, you're right, 15, 16. I wrote it down, but in my mind, it was different. Okay.
Okay. Well, reconvene the meeting. Um, we're on item 15, 10 a.m. Set the public hearing, zone change request for RH dash 21 dash 12 for possible action. Consideration, discussion, and possible approval to set the public hearing with the date to be determined by the county clerk. RH dash 21 dash 12 is a zone change request submitted by Anne Schrempf to change the HC Highway Commercial zoning designation to RR dash 1.25 rural ranchette, one and a quarter acre minimum lot size. Zoning designation on property located at 4765 Pond Drive, Assessor's Parcels number 13 dash 0053 dash 25. Discussion and possible action.
It's just a set two.
Just a set two, yeah.
I'm here for the next item.
Okay. So this is a set two. Can I have a motion to set to uh, set this to public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to set to public hearing. Uh, the zone change request for RH dash 21 dash 12.
Okay. Motion's on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm 16. Wellness and Insurance Committee request for funding for employee wellness celebration. Consideration, discussion, and possible approval for Insurance Wellness Committee's request in the amount of $1,000 to uh, conduct the Humboldt County City Winnebago Wellness Celebration to be held on September 8th, 2021, from 11 uh, to 1 p.m. at the Courthouse Parking Lot on 5th Street. Discussion and possible action. Now it's you.
Good afternoon. Betty Lawrence, for the record, um, with the Planning Department and Wellness Committee and Insurance Committee. Um, about four years ago, we did something similar and we wanted to do this again because we didn't have open enrollment this year, so the employees weren't able to come and talk to Affleck, Colonial, New York Life, all the ancillary um, servers. Um, we're hoping that Humboldt General will come. I have spoken to someone. They're, they might come and do blood pressure checks, but the um, A&amp;H Insurance is going to provide some snack type things, will probably provide wa- water. It will be from actually 11 to 2, which is during lunch hour. Um, we've been asked if we could provide food since it's during lunch. Right now, I have reached out to the Lions Club. They do do a hot dog cart. For $5, you can get a hot dog, um, chips and a drink. And I know that's not real healthy, but it would be giving back to the community, um, help them raise money for what they do also. I don't see that we would spend a thousand dollars. Um, what we'll do is each department will get raffle tickets and then different businesses, the city, they'll bring baskets and people can put a raffle ticket in what they went, want to win. Um, we try to keep it kind of health-wise. Um, so we're just asking if we could spend up to that amount. Like I said, I don't really see that happening. And basically, it would be for the food.
I uh, have no problem with it. I mean, I think it's something we offer to our employees.
We just wanted to say thank you because our numbers have been going down because people are utilizing their insurance wisely, so we're not seen.
I would be happy to take it to tomorrow night's meeting that I strongly recommend that HGH be involved.
Commissioner, could you speak into the mic? Thank you.
Said I would happy, I would be happy to take it to the hospital meeting tomorrow night that I strongly recommend that HGH be involved in it.
I did get a call from, and I can't remember her last name. She's kind of, she took Nicole's place. She's the PR person. Um, and just on the record, after much coercion from Alicia Heiser and Tracy, she's been going to call me for like a month now and I just got an email yesterday or the day before, so.
Thank you.
Well, if no one has an issue with this, I'll entertain a motion.
I would make a motion that we approve a thousand, not to exceed a thousand dollars for the Insurance and Wellness Committee to hold a celebration on September 8th, 2021, from 11 to 1 in the Courthouse Parking Lot on 5th Street.
Okay. Motion is on the floor. All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
And you're invited also.
Thank you. Everybody likes hot dogs. I like one.
Are we to the last item and did we get all the others?
We got them all done. We're to 23.
23. Humboldt County Strategy for County Manager. Strategy and Goals for County Manager. Consideration, discussion, and possible approval to set the county manager's strategic goals and direct Humboldt County Manager Dave Mandiola in implementing these goals. Discussion and possible action. Now, I think this is uh, Abel had been working on this and he sent out some information, I guess it was a week or so ago. I can't really remember. I hope everyone had a chance to look at those. Uh, how he and I talked a little bit, I talked with him a little bit on how we set that up for... You want to say anything, Dave?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, excuse me. Um, Mr. Chair, Dave Mandiola, for the record. So I think the uh, you know, this really came out of the performance evaluation and um, I think the goal really is simply to say, identify, it can be as many as you want, but I think when you get into goal setting, you really need to focus on, in my opinion, four or five key things that you want, you know, your organization to focus on, specifically my office, the county manager's office. And, and I think that some of those, you know, historically speaking, I, again, as I mentioned before, I kind of took those out of the, the um, retreat that we did every, every year in January, but of course, my contract is specific to doing it um, within 60 days um, of the start of the new fiscal year. So that would put us where we are today, late in August. Um, and so the real goal here is... And so the real goal here is, in my mind, is to identify, again, four or five key things that you would really like to see the county manager's office focus on. And, and I think the examples that Abel provided were things like the nitrate issue in, in Grass Valley. The budget might be one, something specific on the budget that we want to do differently or, or, or better. So those are the kind of things. And then the other part of that is to start working on some, you know, milestones so that you can quantify if you're making progress, and, and to look at that, could be on a monthly basis, but might be a quarterly basis, so that we, you can say, and it would be on the agenda, so where I'd come in and say, here's the things that, that you asked me to focus on and strategy, and, and the strategies that we've put together around that, and where are we at today? What progress have we made on each of these? And so I think it, it can be as complicated as you want. I, I personally don't think it's terribly complicated, um, but again, I think the more of them that you have, now, that doesn't mean that's the only thing I would work on, of course, because there's things happening constantly that are coming across my desk and, um, you know, for example, we were talking about the sage grouse thing. Jeremy Drew called me, uh, early this morning, and we were talking about the new withdrawal and how that's going to affect the current lawsuit, and we were having those. So those kind of things are always going to be ongoing, but I think the four or five key things are the things that you think are big, things that you, we really need to make progress on, and, and that's what you would focus on. So that's kind of my thought, pretty simplistic in nature, but I don't think it has to be very complex, so.
Did everyone see that? Have any comments on, on what was put together as a night framework, I guess, of, of how it would come down? I mean, as far as setting up goals, um, like you said, I mean, there's, things are going to spring up that we, we haven't thought about or, you know. COVID, for instance, last year took a lot of Dave's time. No one thought, had any idea that was coming, but it did take a lot of his time. And I think it's important for, for, whether it's Dave or any county manager, to understand what the commission's expectations are, what their priorities are, so that he knows, he or she knows what to be working on. I think it came in the twenty-fifth. If I remember right. I think I looked it up last night.
As to when Abel sent that out, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, it was the, uh, eight-six is what I have.
Yeah, I think it was that first week in August.
Was it?
Yeah.
Eight-six.
Yeah, and one of the ways maybe to start again, Dave Mindiola, would be to just throw out some things that you think are important. Maybe each one of the Commissioners throw out one thing that's on your mind, that's a high priority for you, and then we'll collect those, maybe go through twice, since we're missing Commissioner French, and then say we come up with eight, and then try to pare that down to four, or five, or six, or whatever you want.
And so, I mean, how do we envision using this? You were saying like maybe quarterly revisit them and see what the progress has been made on, on all the items?
Yeah, and it could be monthly. I just think some of these projects are big, like nitrate. That's a big, you know, it, it moves, it's a slow behemoth, but it would be good to quarterly say, hey, here's what we've done, and then from that meeting, you'll say, well, Dave, what's next? And what can, how quickly can we get it done? And we'll put that on the agenda to say, okay, here's the next three items we need to accomplish, and I think we can get them done by this date.
Yeah, and I think it would also be an opportunity for you. You're the one that gets calls that this is the, some big new issue is coming up that's taking a lot of your time, and you tell the, well, Commissioners, this is, this is taking a lot of my time right now, and this is, I've kind of become a priority, you know?
Yeah.
So, okay, with Commissioners, I, that I'm working, putting so much time into this, taking me away from, from some other things, or whatever.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's definitely part of that strategic planning that you do. You come up with, you know, a, a plan and a, you know, a, a direction that you want to go by, uh, a topic, and then, like you said, if something comes up and happens, and it could, could be things that we have control over, things we don't have control over. COVID's a great example of that. I mean, it just threw everything in a tizzy because all those state partners that we work with were all working from home, if at all, for a long period of time. So it really set us back on many fronts with that, too. So, yeah, but, but I think that if you think about it, the seven years, just about seven years I've been here, COVID was very interesting. I mean, it was very different. Other things came up, but they didn't necessarily take away from what we were trying to do. They just added another layer of burden on, but again, you just get them done. You find a way to get them done.
Another, another example is legislative years. You have to spend more time, uh, paying attention to what's going on at the legislature and where we need to be weighing in on things and what's coming up and that kind of stuff. Then on those odd years, it's not, that's something that you spend very little time with, you know?
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, and I think we've got some really, you know, processes in place that are very effective. For example, legislative years, Gina takes the point on that, and, because she gets, you know, all the BDRs as they come through, and then she'll study them and say, okay, this one needs to be answered by the county manager, this one needs to be answered by law enforcement, this one, and so she'll separate those out and get them to the right people, and that way we don't all get them. And so she's done a really nice job. We've kind of changed that process, and this year was much better than normal because Gina stays all over it. And then she'll tell you, I need this by this time, this answer. So, so that's one of those processes where it's very effective in legislative years, but you're right. You know, gosh, if you've got gun control going on and you've got, um, you know, all kinds of issues, there's a lot of extra work that, that goes in, because, you know, I end up talking to a lot of people around the state. What are you doing? How are you handling this? What do you think of it? What do you see as the problem? So those are just things that are just part of the job. You know, you just really need to get feedback from others, and, uh, you know, J.J. Quiget and I laugh about it all the time, because when the phone rings, he's like, okay, which item do you want to talk about? So he knows that he's having that same conversation with six, seven, eight other, other people, so.
You hear, you hear people complain about it all the time on TV in different states where metropolitan areas control you. You don't really realize how bad it is till you sit in on a lot of those meetings and you see that, you know, Las Vegas has people, senators, legislators, coming up with stuff all the time, and they have no idea how it's going to affect the rural area, and some of them frankly don't care. So you've got to stay on top of it.
Most of them don't care, so.
Thoughts?
I have some thoughts. Oh, yeah.
Um, did you get a chance to look at that that Abel came, sent out?
Uh... Yeah, when it first came out, I think I did, but, uh, I haven't really had time to, to do a lot with it. But was, the first thing I do with this, go back and see what contract says, okay, where we're at. A lot of this stuff that you're, you're talking about here, Dave, our input into it is very good, but your input is better because you're the manager, and you get so much more information in, you know, in your office than any of us do. So we need some help from you also as to where we're at, where we'd like to be. Because like you say, I, I mean, in business, there was something every day that comes up. You know, and it, you can think, well, I've got these seven things I want to do today, and then the phone rings. Yeah, and my truck is busted in half sitting out here in the middle of the freeway, and they've got the freeway backed up for fifteen miles, you know? So there's, it's stuff like that, but input from you would be great.
So rephrase that if you could, so focus on, um, providing more info, more focused info. Maybe you could help me clear that exactly what you want me to do, so, on that front. Because one of the things we did, just to address that, is if you'll notice on the staff report, we went to the template. That really, was that Reno it came out of, or Washoe County? I can't remember where we found that. And the idea behind that is that, so if I'm an individual department head and even outside people who want to get on our agenda, we send this template to them, and we say, I need this information, and don't just gloss over it, I want some detail in it, um, because you're the one presenting, you're the one asking the commission to do something. And so they provide that to us, and, and the nice thing about that, what I used to do is I would call them, I'd have this discussion with them, try to understand what it is that they were trying to do, and then I would use, I would use my words, and sometimes that wasn't completely accurate, because again, you got a lot of things going on, and, and so you, you maybe didn't take the complete notes in it, so it was a little different, and that would confuse the commission. So with this new template, one of the things I've done, I got one recently, I won't say where it came from, where they, they, they filled out the first part of it, which was nice, it was a nice overview, but that was already in the agenda language, and then they left everything blank. And I sent it back to them, and I said, I won't go on the agenda unless you fill in all the blanks. You need to give me as much detail as you can because you need to convince the commission that, that you need this approved, or whatever it is. And it's not my job to do it for you. You know, not my job to go in and investigation and research to find out what you want done. You tell me, and then I'll see if I can find where the blank spots are, and, and then we can go from there. That's really helped. I know, I don't know if you noticed, but the information's better. It's more completed, asks the key questions that we think you're going to want to hear, and so, so that's helped. So along those lines, um, we were constantly looking at better ways to do that, and the one thing that, again, I'm going to give feedback to the commission, too, what I would recommend is that when you first see that, that agenda, uh, whether it's that, that Friday we send it out for everybody to review, or if you see it, um, after it's published the following, uh, Wednesday, or Tuesday night, whatever it is, um, if, if, when you go through it the next day or two, or whatever, um, make a list and either send me an email or call me. Just call me and say, Dave, I got a question about this one, this one, this one. Tell me what it is. I'll go do the research for you. Happy to do it. But sometimes I don't think of everything, or I've got a hundred different things going on at once, and I want to make sure you guys get the information that you need. And so, and, and that is my job. And so I, I have no problem following up. Michelle's outstanding. She, you know, have, having been a reporter, she knows how to make calls and ask questions. And so, so that's really helped us a lot, too. So that's, so along that line, Commissioner Haas, if, you know, if there's a specific thing, so if, if maybe it be a thing is just to focus on, um, providing more accurate and in-depth information, does that sound right?
Well, we, we discussed that in the first meeting I attended, and after the meeting, and you've done very well to give us more information, more information each time, because it's, it makes it a whole lot easier. And, you know, I got the agenda a week early. I don't know, did you send it out a week early for a reason?
Yeah, what we started doing is sending you, uh, so what we do every Friday, um, prior to the day we publish, so like for this meeting here, uh, the Friday before, so that would have been what, the twenty-third, sixteenth, call it the thirteenth, that was Friday the thirteenth, actually. So what we started doing is I used to just send it out to the management team, and I would send it to maybe an outside organization that wanted to be on the agenda, and I would, they need to review the agenda. Is the language correct? Is that what you're asking for? Is there something we're missing? And people get back to us, Wendy takes a look at it, individual departments or office, offices will come back and say, no, it's not exactly that, it's this, or they'll make changes for us. I just decided and to just send it out to you guys.
We requested it, too.
Or you requested, that's what, that's what started it.
And I couldn't open any of it. I can never open a little box.
So the...
I don't know.
Really?
I think I know what he's getting at, if, if I may, I guess. So you send it out, but I think all of the links to all of the attachments and stuff are not quite done yet.
But that one's not even a link, that's a Word document.
Yeah, so I think that's, what he's getting at is it'll show where it's supposed to be highlighted, like where there'll be a document inserted, there's, there's no links to those yet.
Oh, that's true. That's true, there's no link. It's the main language.
There's no link to that, there's no link to that document yet. So when you're saying, okay, I want more info, and I'm going to click on that, does it come up?
I see what he's saying.
See what he's saying?
Yeah, so what we do, in the software we use, if there's going to be an, an item, an attachment, we put that information, we make...
Shows as a hyperlink, yeah.
And it'll say at the bottom, it'll say expenditures, for example.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's not a link in there yet, until it's colored and, and under that.
I was able to, to look at the agenda.
Right, and that's the old idea, is just so you can see what's going to be on the agenda.
So we're to look at content, make sure that, or, you know...
Before, we were getting it after it was posted.
Perfect, yeah.
We were, we saw something in there that maybe we weren't prepared for, or we would like to hold off on, or, you know, that happened a few times, and, uh, we could get back before he actually posted that and, and find out more about it, or, or whatever, you know?
Does that make sense to you, Tom?
There's, there's been a few things that we've asked, and it's gotten done. We're getting a weekly report from both the county manager and Assistant County Manager. That only started less than a year ago.
Yep.
You know, we got the staff reports, which we've been getting a long, long time.
Commissioner, could you use your microphone, please?
But those are, those are requests that we've made that have tried to get, I guess, more information before the meeting. That's why we've requested that, and it helps, and I don't know that we can ever get all the information, because I don't think Dave has it all until close to the last of the meeting. He gives us the best he can, but I've seen a huge improvement in that sort of, uh, communication, and he continues to improve on it when, when he knows that it, the need's there, so, um, that's all I can say about that.
Yeah, and I, like I said from the beginning, our job's not to dictate their day-to-day activities. I mean, they have a lot of stu, they, they're here to do their jobs. We're, you know, I, I agree, we're getting more information, and, and more information's good, and...
See, on that first, I couldn't open any of this.
Yeah, okay.
Really?
Nope. It, until we sent the, the regular one, you know, on the regular day, I could do the staff report, I could look at every one of those, you know, and, and that's the information I'm looking for. You know, I, I was tickled when I got it a week early, okay? And, uh, so I went ahead and, and went through it, and I couldn't open any of them.
So I think I have an answer to that.
Yeah, go ahead.
Abel Darrell, now Assistant County Manager, Human Resources Director, for purposes of the record. When the, when we work on the agendas, um, we are able to add items for attachment, and sometimes what we do is we add the title of the item, but we don't have the attachment yet to add on there, so that's why sometimes you can't click on that. It's not linked yet because the attachment hasn't been added, so that's why when you get it really...
Take the first one, throw it away, and let, on a can opener.
Uh-huh, yeah, that was just a really, really rough draft. You know, we're still waiting on that info.
I understand.
Just a toolbox. You can put tools in, there you go.
I know, this is going to be on a...
Now I understand it, okay? It's, you, you actually gave me a good understanding of it, and said, hey, I want to look at it first before it's finalized, because once it's finalized, it's finalized.
Too late, yeah.
And I, and I just brought up the fact that I couldn't open it, so now we have the reason why.
Now, if you've, if you've got like the, the PDF that you open up, just like when I get on these calls, like today, I actually open up the PDF from the website, and everything I was showing you today, it comes right off of those links. So probably what we need to do is work with you on those. If yours links aren't opening up for you, then we just got to work with you and try to find out what's going on with it, and, and we can do that. That's easy. So, because they should open it.
Well, the, okay. Abel just told me that they're not done yet.
That's on the first...
That's on that first Friday one, yeah.
That makes sense.
Absolutely.
Because I had no problem whatsoever opening this one up. Did the staff report on it, I went through each one of those, read every one of them, so, and it was, why not? You know, I mean... You know, I mean, so now I know, so.
Now you know.
Now I know.
Wendy Maddox, purposes of the record, I'm making notes for all of you and um let me know if we can talk about this at the very end, but it, what I'm hearing from you is that um you just want to set an expectation and it sounds like some of this has already been occurring. One of them being an expectation to focus on providing accurate and in-depth information to the board in the form of early agenda review to the board and weekly reports from the assistant manager and county manager. Is there anything else that you want to add to that expectation?
Not at this time.
I I mean, in in personal communication, you know, um, when we call him, I usually, if he doesn't call me, I know he's in a meeting or something, as soon as he gets out of that meeting, I'll get a call back. He's been very good at that.
I'll agree. My next?
Yeah.
So I'm going to switch it up just a little bit. I know a lot of these goals that Abel had kind of, they were hypothetical or or just stuff that we've worked on or issues we've had in the past. That's all great stuff. I have no doubt in my mind, we can ask you to go build a water treatment plant and you can get it done. But what I'd like to see, just from the little bit that I've been here, is a goal along the lines of of cohesion of departments that you're responsible for. Um, I I guess making all departments talk to each other and and click. Um, I think that's huge in any organization, private or public. You know, we we can't make people get along, I I understand that, but come up with a system or rather be teaming sessions or or staff meetings where everybody's involved, you know, where I I guess just an outsider looking in, I I kind of can see a breakdown in in all of the departments of whether it's communication or, you know, I I don't know what it is and I don't really know how how we measure that. And I do understand goals need to be measured. You know, I I don't know what that looks like, I guess Abel could help with that. How how do we measure that kind of stuff? And measure progress on cohesion of the departments? But I would really like to be sitting here a year from now and have all of the the departments reporting back going, man, we, things are really clicking here in the county, we're we're talking, we're 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 sharing information.
But my answer?
Yeah.
So Abel Darrell, now assistant, um, a possible way to get a baseline for that would be to do uh a climate survey, for example, and I believe maybe in mining, you got those occasionally.
Yeah.
You know, are you happy with your work? Are you given the right tools?
Right.
How do you feel about your supervisor, et cetera, et cetera? Uh, and then that way you get a true sense of how really employees really feel about the job and the organization. And then that's your baseline and based on that, then you can set goals with hard numbers. Can we improve this metric?
Yeah.
Or can we do more training or do the employees lack something that they need to do their job effectively? So that might be something.
And along with that, Dave, maybe it was something you were handed or, you know, you were handed, this is the way it is, you know, I I don't know, was it inherited? It's just something I I guess I noticed as an outsider looking in. What can Dave do to to bring this, this, this operation together, I guess? And make it, make it tick better, I guess.
Well, and you know what helps with that too, and I, we don't need to do it in this meeting.
Yeah.
But come to me privately, if you witnessed something like you're saying.
Yeah, and I like saying, yeah, I'm not calling you out specifically, I just.
But it helps. I need to know if you heard something or saw something.
Right.
Then I can address it, but if I don't know about it, I mean, we have management meetings every month. I mean, I'm not going to try to defend anything.
For sure, no.
I'm just suggesting to you, I'm an open book, just holler at me and if we got something we can fix, I'm all over it. Because I want the very best for everybody, so.
I would just like to see that as a, as a goal on there too, is I I guess more of the people side versus the production side of things. Work on the internal people and and the cohesion of the departments. And I'll just leave it at that.
Yep. You got that, Wendy?
Yes, I'm trying to make a little list and then my my hope is to share it at the end of this so that everybody can look and add, subtract, or whatever you'd like. Abel, you may have to help me share later.
Absolutely.
I kind of see this as a living document that will be amended maybe more than once a year.
Well, like, like Dave said and Abel said in his, you know, it, four or five big things, you know, four things, maybe that big things that he needs to keep in the back of his mind in his day-to-day operations. I mean, I I don't think they should be super specific. I I don't think this is, that's what this is for, that we're going to say, you you have to have that plant built by next year at this time. I don't, I don't think that's what what this is.
Has to be.
Is for is just, you know, stuff that we can measure on, I guess, and say, look, okay, we, you know, we had this meeting last year and boy, you really worked, you know, those departments are really going, boy, your surveys are coming back, you know, top-notch, you know, we're getting all the information we need, um, things are going good, let's up the bar, of course, for next year.
And then you do it again the following year to find out if it's gone backwards or forwards.
Well, in the quarterly cadence, when I recommended that, it allows the commission to quickly pivot. Maybe there's something that came up.
Right.
You know, maybe.
Yeah, now we're worried about something else, yeah.
Legislature or something and we, the county manager really needs to focus on that, that allows you to easily pivot.
Have anything else in regards to this? What are we actually approving here? We don't have. We don't have anything in a document or anything that lay spells it out, lays it out.
I think the way it's worded, we're supposed to set goals.
We can always, it's however it works best for all of you. Like I said, we could do the screen share, we can get something um drafted from today's meeting and then put it on a future meeting and attach it so that you have it to look at and have some time to look at it and see if you want to edit or add to.
I don't know, maybe I'm envisioning it wrong, but that whatever our goals are that we give Dave to accomplish should be in writing so that we can all go back and say.
Absolutely.
And maybe that's.
You did this, this is done.
Maybe that's what we do here is take them down. You guys can digest them just the same as we need to. David needs to look at it and go, look, this is, this is attainable, this is not attainable and this is why. And um, and then bring it back for an approval at a different meeting?
Well, I think, you know, let me give you, what I'd like to hear you discuss here is budget. During the performance evaluation.
Yeah.
Um, there was mention that I wasn't hands-on with the budget. And and so and Ron and I have kind of talked a little bit about this in that, you know, there's, and I'll start the conversation, I guess. So there's two ways that I think you can look at it. One is you, and this is what my predecessor did, because I got to watch him, we were starting the budget process when I first came in. And, you know, people would bring in a budget and he would literally go down and just eliminate six, seven, 10 things until he got to a number that he wanted. So the commissioners never saw it. They never saw what the need was of the department, they never saw anything. They just saw a number. It made it really easy for the commissioners, because the number was always at or below where it was the year before. Made it really easy. Meantime, our infrastructure was falling apart.
Right.
There were, we were behind on everything. When I finally got in there, I had these long lists of things and, you know, and of course, it was painful for the commission. Ron started with me. And it was kind of like, do we really need all this? And they were like, yeah, well, we've been working on this for 10 years, we've wanted to do this or that or whatever. So my point being is, I decided at that point in time that I would much rather somebody give me a budget and have them explain it to you why they needed it. You know, to go through it in as much detail as you cared to go through it. Now, a lot of the budgets are easy because they're pretty much the same thing, there's no big projects in them, it's just, you know, operational things from year to year. But there are always IT's going to be a big one, roads, public works is going to be a big one, buildings and grounds is going to be a big one. Um, those are, and of course, the sheriff's office, because he's got three big ones. So it was, it's my feeling that if I were to to cut the budget and break it down so that's no more than, say, 5% or 10% over, um, technically, you would not ever know about all the things that that particular manager or, you know, official, elected official wanted to you to know about. So and again, I can do it either way. I I I have a pretty good feeling now that I'm seven years into what we do and don't need. And that's one of the things I tried to do with the buildings and grounds this year, is you'll notice we've broken out by wants and needs. I told, and of course, I wasn't here that day, which was unfortunate. But what I wanted them to do is simply say to you, hey, here's the needs, got to have this.
Right.
And then you could argue over that if you wanted to. But here's the, here's the the wants, we'd really like to have, but we can make it for another year. The whole idea was to make it easy on you guys and just say, okay, we're going to, we're going to not even discuss the wants because we want to take that out. And I think the number was 300 and some thousand dollars, so it was significant. But anyway, but you ended up going through all of them, which is great. Because I want you to know about everything, I want you to be aware of it, I want you to think I'm, you know, I don't want to be charged with saying, you covered this up, you didn't know about, we didn't know about this, why didn't you tell us? Uh, I, because I'm making this, you know, decision on your behalf and you didn't know about it and then somebody comes up and says, yeah, I need a hundred thousand dollars for X, Y, and Z, it broke. Then all of a sudden, I'm in trouble, because I didn't share that with you. So that that scares me a little bit. Again, I, it, maybe, and I've I've thought about 100 days ways to do this, maybe if I can come up a way like I did with buildings around and say, okay, we dug, because I've met with them five times, IT, same thing, five or six times, we went through detail and detail. But maybe there's some way I can break it out and say, wants, needs. And the way you need to take that is that the wants are stuff that we'd like to do because it might help, you know, it will help the network do the X, Y, or Z, but we think we can do another year without them. That that makes it, I think, easier for you to say, okay, we trust you, we're going to try to make it. And with the full knowledge that some things could come up, something could break, even though we thought we could make it a year and and we might have to come back to you. But I'd rather, but I'll do that because we were trying to, you know, expedite the process or make it easier on you guys, because you come in and you've got other things going on in your life and you come in that one day. And even though you've seen the the budget, you know, a week or two in advance, I think Gina's trying to get that out earlier, it's still hard because you don't know all the details behind it. And that's why it ends up coming back to this room in long discussions with the different officials. So I'm, I'll do whatever you'd like me to do. I can go either way, but it does, I just, I want to go on record and know that it scares me that I would make a unilateral decision to cut something that could, that could end up being a big deal and come back before you and then, you know, I'm looking like a guy who is just cutting for the sake of cutting.
Well, that makes all all the sense in the world to me, the way you put it. But as a commissioner, we are not privy to some of the information of why IT needs a server and and I mean, we just don't have the time. And there, I mean, there could be, that could, you can see it because you know it's going to help four other departments if we put this in. We don't see it, we don't talk it, that's, that's not our talk every day, that's your business, that's your talk every day. And we don't see those kind of things. That's where, I don't, I get exactly what you're saying and I agree with what you're saying. But I I think you have a better idea of what a need is and what a want is than any of us do. We try to figure it out here.
Sure.
But you live it every day and you know that, yeah, he, you know, he wants a bigger screen because uh so-and-so's got a bigger screen or something like that, I don't know. But, you know, we don't, we don't see that. And uh, I think you, you can, I'm not saying that we want you to bring us a balanced budget, okay? I want you to leave some cushion in there on things that you're not sure about, let the commission decide on it. But I don't think we need to decide on everything. You know that there's some things that, yeah, I can, we can get by without that this year. Maybe we'll look, bring it up again next year. I guess that's where I, I don't know if that helps you knowing, you know, if that.
No, it does. No, it really does. And I think as long as everybody has that understanding that, you know, I'm going to take out the things that I believe can wait. That's, let's make it that simple. And for those things that I think we need, I I think that every department, and and a lot of them do a really nice job in their explanations. I mean, look at Brad Schultz, good lord. I mean, everything you wanted to know about $10,000 of business.
Right.
Is like a 15-page novel. Which is good stuff, though, if 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 you really want to dig down into that, to that budget, I think that one of the things I can definitely get my folks to do, and I, I mean, I can't make Tammy do it, but I can encourage people to do it, is to break down that that budget a little bit farther, like to your point. If I've got a line item that's um, you know, $500,000, don't just write down, you know, it's five of these and six of those and seven of these, that doesn't help anybody. But tell us what effect that's going to be. If we buy this, this is what it's going to do, it's going to provide backup, um, you know, disaster recovery. And what that means is if we lose, if we get hacked, or if we have a flood or an earthquake or something like that, we'll have a separate site where all the data will be there. It may take us better part of a day or two to bring everything back up, but we have the datas intact. And that's the whole key behind disaster recovery. You have a second set of it and maybe a third in some cases. So those are the kind of things I think we can explain a little.
And see, like, one of the things that I guess caught us all off guard this year too was, and you weren't here and that was unfortunate, is you had them take a lot of their programming costs and put it all in IT. We'd gotten halfway through the budget before we'd realized that that was the case. If we'd have seen that there, we'd have said, hey, you know, we took a hundred thousand dollars out of your budget and put a, in IT, or you did, where did you, but you're still asking for more money than you did last year. Why, why is that? Where did that money, why didn't you take that out of your budget? Why isn't your budget less than last year, you know?
I think another thing that could really help on the budget, and I agree what you're, you were just saying as far as wants and needs, and I think that's important. But I I think it'd be good for me and I think good for everyone, when you're doing your budgets within departments, if you said, okay, we're going to need this, this piece of IT or these new computers, uh, or we have one here that's three years old, we know not this budget, but two budgets down the road, this is going to have to be plugged in. So we know ahead of time too, what other big expensive items are going to be coming in the future. And we know next year that the one that's been put down the road a year, it's going to be coming into this year's budget. We're going to have to address that as a need this year. Last year it was a want.
So like a three to five-year forecast?
Yeah.
Yeah. Because, you know, especially computers, they're going to wear out every five years. So uh, and maybe it's a printer, well, maybe that printer doesn't wear out, but you've had that money, it's kind of scheduled, now it can move out again. And I think that could help on a lot of the budget.
Your roads.
Roads, yeah, exactly. And we, we're going to have to have a new grader this year, we're going to need another one in two years because this one's going to wear out.
Yeah.
Yeah, that transcends IT to other departments, like you said.
No, that's helpful. Okay, we'll look at some different options for that.
Well, when you, when the budget came in, you know, we had these capital expenditures. $1,500,000 for a shop for building grounds? Yeah, I mean, that that was, I I don't know where we're going to come up with that kind of money to do that.
We're going to need to at some point, not for one, 1.5 million.
Well, but that started at three million. That was the original budgeting we got from Mike Shepherd to take that site over near Maverick. So that's what came back, it's gonna cost three million. And he was guessing because of COVID and the prices had gone up and a lot of that. And that's why we just said, same thing you said, one point five, we don't think we're gonna need one point five, but let's start there. Maybe that's a good number. So, I mean, they're projections, so.
But then we went up there and looked at the shop they built it for the, for the road department. I mean, you could redesign that just a little bit. It's gonna cost you five hundred thousand instead of, you know, one point five, so.
Well, and again, we, we're just projecting, we don't, unless, unless I get an actual architectural design done, you know, or just go out and get the actual quotes and we know exact, because they don't even know what they need right now. So we're, we're trying to get that started.
Well, and that's another thing is that the capital improvements, that was up to us to decide which ones we pull out of them. You know, and, and when you have two new commissioners trying to, trying to, you know, survive that, and then, and then the other three are, you know, know somewhat about it, but, you know, it was really tough to do. It's still tough in my mind. And I lay awake at night saying, you know, we're seven million dollars over this thing. Where's it gonna come about?
Well, and that's one thing we gotta fix too. We, we are not seven million dollars in the hole. And we're not gonna be anywhere near that. And so Gina and I have talked about it and we're working with um, Mr. Colt, Alan Colt from Pool Pack, who was at Churchill County for twenty plus years as their comptroller. And he's got a training session, I've, and I said, you gotta come in, because it's, it looks like it's seven million, but it's not. I've been doing this for seven years and the, the same thing that you're talking about, I went out of my mind the first year I was here, I was so mad. And I, and I had, because I kept hearing from my comptroller, which was not Gina at the time, um, that, oh, we're gonna be seven million dollars in the hole, we're gonna, we're just blowing our whole budget, we have nothing. And I thought, oh my god, it's just like you. So I went searching around and I started studying, I, I can't tell you how many hours I spent going through old audits just to see what we did in the past, what we did. And finally, I called um, Andre Rose. I said, Andre, I gotta meet with you, I'm going out of my line. So she sat me down, she walked me through it, and I didn't get it the first two or three times we sat down, but we sat multiple times. And when I was all done, I said to her, Andre, so we're not even near gonna go into deficit on this art. She goes, well, you might go in one year, eight hundred thousand or a million, but the next year you'll have a surplus of two million or three million, just look at the audits. And I did. And that was the case. So I've since then put together a spreadsheet. And, and what I, I want to give it to you guys at some point when we do this training with Alan, so that you can see historical, where we come in on revenues, what we project and where we actually come in. And you'll see that there's about a thirty-five percent difference between the two. Well, that's huge, if you think about that. If we go by what we projected in revenues, yeah, we're gonna have a deficit every year. But history, history tells us we don't. And, and we never did, and we never, well, who knows? We could have a complete falter of the economy and that could happen. But I think what I'm trying to point out is that, I agree with you, Commissioner Haas, if, if somebody told you, hey, we're projecting a seven million dollar loss this year, I would say, let's start over, bring that thing back, we need to cut everything, we need a balanced budget. I would do the same thing because that's what I was struggling with. And, but the reality is, you know, expenditures, we don't spend to the level that we project for any number of reasons. We can't get to them, we don't have the resources to get them all done, um, things get delayed, any number of things. Um, and then from a revenue standpoint, you know, the, the state, to be honest with you, when the state projects, they're pretty much spot on. And, and yet we, and, and I agree with, don't get me wrong, I agree with Gina that we should be very conservative and, and, you know, go at least fifteen percent below that. I agree with her approach completely. But we need to tell the whole story, and the whole story to you guys on that is to see what the history says. And we can go back, I've gone back six years, seven years, I think now. Um, we could go back twenty and I'll bet you're, you're gonna find, a matter of fact, I've talked to several people, and Alan confirmed it, I signed the spreadsheet and he said, Dave, you're absolutely right, that's the way it works. That's government budgeting, at least at the state and Nevada level. Feds are a different story altogether. So I just think we need to give you more information about that so that, and again, if you want me to balance the budget, Gina and I, we'll do it. We can do it. But if we were to balance a budget, we would definitely have to cut bodies.
We, we have a hard time, Tom. In private industry, you don't budget that way.
Right.
You budget for, yeah. We have to budget for what we know, or we have a good idea of our income is gonna be. We can't expect our income to be a million dollars and, and our budget to be two million. Particularly if you've got a banker, he's gonna tell you, you better go back and start over here because I'm not loaning you any money until you can, you can come closer. But we, we take that into government, government should work that way, but it doesn't. Um, you know, we always, uh, Dave has been really good, the commissioner's always been, been really good about, you know, I guess, making, making sure that we, we don't approve everything that is budgeted. And David, you know, it doesn't always, it doesn't all come before us. Everything that's budgeted doesn't always come before us. And unfortunately, I think every department has and always has added their budgets in case of worst case scenario, somebody's, something happens. I, I know I'm not gonna spend it, but if it happens, I've got it, you know, that kind of.
I think too, and I don't know if the board is aware, but we do have a plan that was approved, I don't know, two, three years ago, that um, if, if revenues fall to a certain amount, then certain things get triggered. And the board approved that, I think.
Right.
What, what does it start off with? Just slowing down expenditures?
Twelve mil, well, twelve, ending fund balance. So if, once the ending fund balance, if it dropped before twelve million dollars, then we have a list of action items that we can bring before the board, you know, that starts with uh, cutting budgets by a certain percent, and then it goes to, eventually, if you go below, below eleven million dollars, you know, then you, we, you go to things like furloughs and layoffs and different types of things. So, so we have a plan in place to deal with that. Um, and like I say, it's, it's, it's difficult too on that because if you watch that month to month, it'll, it'll go up by a couple, up or down a couple, a couple million dollars. Depends upon how much the CTX was and, because we get that two months late. And, and so things will kind of go up and down, but in the end, what I look at is the audits. And what the audits will tell you is that we are pretty much spot on. I mean, our expenditures have gone up over the last couple of years. For my first four years, we kept them flat. We worked really hard at that. Um, but, you know, I think what kind of happened was a combination of uh, inflation, uh, cost of goods were much greater, uh, those, there was a number of items that we started going up, and we started hiring a few more people, so.
Well, you, you, you have, you have all those things that are, you have no control over really, your yearly increases in your wages and salaries, they're, they're gonna go up. Uh, you hope that your revenues go up enough to cover it. But, you know, I think it's really good that this county has, you know, under, underreported, not underreported, but uh, underbudgeted their, their revenues and, and overbudgeted their expenses. Because then you come at the end of the year and it all comes good. And we had that, that Abel just brought up about, uh, you know, what we do when we get below twelve and if we get below eleven, you know, we were getting close to that a couple of years ago when we put that in. We were getting darn close to it.
Yeah.
Had we had this COVID that year, we would have been into that.
Yeah.
A year ago.
But then again, I was really pleased when we did have COVID and we were afraid to death of what that was gonna do to our economy, our departments and, and our managers and everything stepped up and we didn't spend any money that, than we didn't have to. And our departments did that on their own. We asked them to and they did it.
You did that, and I watched it. And this year, we got through COVID.
Yeah.
Everything was good. And they want eight and a half million dollars more. And they didn't go to equal out. Uh, so, anyway.
Well, again, and it's not that they wanted eight million more. Again, I go back to that training we gotta do. It was, revenues were projected thirty plus percent below where they should be. If, if you take what's average, which I think is the better way to go, let's figure out what we actually average, then that seven million's more like two. And then it's all about the expenditures. You can find two million dollars. But it'd be, I mean, well, you could find seven too, but that would really, you'd be dropping people left and right, and you may not have a problem that you need to do that. That's a pretty catastrophic thing to do to people's lives, especially when you find out we really need them. And, and by gosh, we have the money too, by the way.
Well, yeah, in reality, the first four years I was a commissioner, we were going backwards. Things started to pick up in the last four years, probably three to four years. We're, we're going in the right direction again, we're putting money away instead of eating into our reserves. We were eating into our reserves, particularly, I think, the first couple of years, you and I were here. Not anything that we were doing, revenues were not coming into, the economy had uh, taken a hit and we were feeling it too.
That was struggling, definitely. And that was uh, you know, previous to that, about the three years before I got here, we had, I think the uh, the pipeline came through, Ruby, and it, it put a lot of money into the uh, account. So we were sitting up, when I first got here, it was nineteen point five million, our ending fund balance. And then we, and then that all just started to go down. So we went, you know, seventeen into sixteen into, so, but now we're, again, on that upward trend now, which is good. That doesn't mean you go spend a bunch of stuff, but it just means that it, it's cyclical. And, and it just happens that way. And, and I think that, again, if you look at, the, the state requires that the county have, I believe it's fourteen percent um, of their total expenditures in their ending fund balance. Also, you go below that, then you get flagged. And then you start to go before Gina's committee that she sits on with the state finance group. And, because they don't want to see people get into trouble. Well, I mean, we're sitting here right now at about seventy, I don't know what the final number is yet on the audit, but I think we're gonna be over eighteen million in our ending fund balance. We're, we're gonna put about eight hundred or a million dollars into it this year. So, the bottom line is, you don't want to, that you don't want that to get too big because then this, then the uh, you know, taxpayers are gonna say, well, why do you need to have twenty million bucks sitting in the bank for a rainy day? And the state says you gotta have at least fourteen, well, we're sitting at about seventy. So we're in really good.
It's our job to spend money.
Right.
We're supposed to spend money effectively and, and in a, in a good way without going in hole.
Well, I think you guys do that. I, I think the way that you go about your business is excellent. You question things, you know, you, like today on the, you know, the backup system for the assessor, those were great questions. We've struggled with them, we've been talking about it and I don't have the answers. I just wish I could make it all happen and come together so that we don't have to have those discussions. But in the meantime, I understand where Andy's coming from. But the, that process that you guys, it's long and arduous sometimes and painful, but I can guarantee the citizens of Humboldt County, they're in good hands.
Right.
You guys, not to worry about you guys doing that, so.
We still have the lowest tax rate state.
Yeah.
Yes. I'm very grateful for that.
Yeah. So.
Not to pat ourselves on the back, but that doesn't, sometimes the citizens forget that.
Uh huh.
They've done a fairly good job of managing as far as that.
So, from the budget standpoint, what I've captured, Wendy, is just um, look at some different approaches uh, as far as when we're budgeting, to look at three-year projections of budget cycles, especially for the big accounts. Whether it's, like you say, road graders, trucks, or if it's building infrastructure, things that we need to do. Um, and I think what we kind of did in the past is if it didn't get approved in the budget process, we would kind of put it over here and say, well, come back next year. Which is the same thing, but it would be a little better to actually put it in a three year and just say, we know we won't get to that until year three. And then we'll just redo that every year. I mean, we do that with respect to our ten-year capital projects plan, but it's pretty loosey-goosey. You know, and it needs to be more work on that front. And then I, I do want to schedule a training, we've already talked to Alan, Gina and I, and, and he's a tremendous educator. And he's been a guy that I go to as well, just to better understand, and, and he does it with humor, which is great. Um, so, anyway, so we're, we'd like to do that as well, if you don't mind, and that'd be something that maybe we can do late this year, um, before we get into that, you know, in January hits, it's so chaotic, especially on a legislative year, but we won't have that next year. Um, but if we could maybe do that training, maybe January or worst case, maybe in, in December, that might be really good to get a different view from a guy from the outside that's been there and done that. So, if that works for you.
What about the red flag laws? The ones that have been ongoing?
Yeah, so here's what I know, we're still trying to get a meeting with Rue Goodnell, he's the attorney. Um, and Michelle's been working his schedule, you know, one day he's available here and he's canceled several times, so. But I think what I understand, and I haven't spoken to Rue directly, but maybe, maybe you have, Wendy, I don't know, is that some of the legislation that came out this year um, uh, actually fixed some of the problems that were the big concerns in that red flag, it red flag law, uh, which the, was the ex parte hearings. Um, and there was two or three items, I was talking to Sheriff Allen and asked if they had addressed what was the, the main reason for the problems that he had. And he says, they really partly did. They didn't completely close the loop, but there was a couple of key issues where the legislation fixed it. So what I want to know from the attorney, uh, uh, Goodnell, is where do we stand now? Is, did that legislation take some of the teeth out of our lawsuit? Or did it just help us and put us in a great place so that when we finally do go to court and get our day in court, is that gonna be, where, where are we gonna sit because of the new legislation? So, I'm hoping for that.
Do you see any fallout from today's Board of Health meeting for Governor's office or anything to the county?
I guess that's possible. I mean, we'll know when we start attending the mitigation and management task force meetings again. I'm sure there'll be pushback. But just like we did last year, our pushback is gonna be, well, I mean, I can't tell you how many times we told it. You know, Commissioner Tipton was there. We're not gonna enforce, we don't have the people to enforce, the resources, we just can't do it. And so what you're asking is an impossibility. Why ask for something if you can't follow up on it? And so, and, I mean, we disagree with it in general, we told them that too, but, but the bottom line is, we told them, you can't enforce it. And that was the one time when they offered to send in a strike force, remember that? They want us, and I said, well, enter at your own risk.
Yeah, enter.
Yes.
Yeah.
Very much so.
You guys are making me a little nervous, I want to go back to priority goals and expectations.
Yeah, sorry.
And make sure that we're not getting off topic and violating open meeting law.
Okay.
So what else do you have for goals, priorities, or expectations?
I have nothing else.
Well, again, we can always, it's a living document, so we can start with this. And then as other things come up, you think of something, we can always add to it.
I wish Commissioner French was here to, you know, his input, you know, but I, I wouldn't.
Yeah, and that's maybe something, I, I don't know if that would work that way since it's not an open meeting, is, could you reach out to, could he reach out to Jim and?
I, I'm happy to send this to both you and Dave, just the little notes I've made, and you all realize that I'm a lawyer, so sometimes I overcomplicate things, it can be just.
What?
broader. Yes. So, uh, it's your, it's your living document and it's whatever you want it to be. So, um, I'm happy to send it to Dave and Abel, and then perhaps, um, Dave, once you take a look at it and you use your notes, you could send it out to all the commissioners. And perhaps we can put this on the next agenda and talk about it again then, when French is available.
Yeah, I would really, this, Commissioner Hill, I would really like to see Commissioner French's uh, buy-in on it and his, his.
Say, all we have to do is show it to him.
Yeah.
If he would like to bring it back.
Yep. Before we.
Yep, leave it to him, leave it up to him.
Yeah. Well, why don't we take what we got? You don't need to do a motion today. Um, and then I'll get Wendy's notes, we'll share it with, with all of you so you can see it. And I'll just ask Commissioner French to get back to me directly to add, delete, comment, whatever. And then, once I get that, then we'll put it on agenda and bring it back.
So not take any action today?
I wouldn't, because French is not here and.
Okay.
And then, that way you guys, then when we get back, you'll have a document to start with.
Well, we could have tabled it two hours ago and.
I know. No, but we got a baseline now.
We did. We got somewhere. We did. I feel good.
Thank you. I saw.
Okay.
I had, are we done with that? No.
I guess that'll be tabled until.
Next meeting?
Commissioner French has a chance to look at it and then we'll bring it back, bring the document back for approval. Whatever you guys put together.
Sounds good.
Approval or consideration, I guess.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So then that would what, take us to future agenda items?
Futures, yeah.
So we have future agenda items?
I haven't had a chance to actually go back through my notes here. Please put a little star by anything I need to bring back.
Wendy Maddox, Deputy DA, if I could start, I want to make sure in regard to your earlier recommendation to, well, of the health board that you made to this board and regarding the mask mandate and the large gatherings, is that something that you all want to be on the next agenda or a special meeting?
I've got that as one of my items.
Perfect. And I'll just hand it over to you.
I know in a few of the meetings, WCVA meeting and stuff, I asked some of members there what they were going to be doing, you know, as far as the mandates go. And they said, it's going to depend on what you guys do Monday. So they're kind of looking, they're going to be looking at what we came, we decided to do today.
Well, what we could do is put out a press release like we did last time and just say, the board, health board recommended the county commissioners that, you know, we're not going to honor the mandate and enforce something along those lines. And we'll do like we did last time and send it around, get everybody's okay nod on it. If that makes sense. That way we can get something out now. Otherwise, we probably need to do a special meeting, which I know nobody really wants to do that. I mean, I think the word's out. If we press, put a press release out, it can probably wait till September 7. But if you don't think it can, let's just do a, you know, a special meeting for the county commissioners, just to deal with that. I actually do have one other thing that came in right after the deadline that needs to be dealt with pretty quickly. So a special meeting, short one, it would be good if we could. And that way it's out there permanently.
That would be next Monday.
We can do it. I was thinking, we could even do it. Yeah, I would say next week would be best, like next Monday, because we don't have a commission meeting.
Let me throw this out there too. This Commissioner Hill, we talked about, I think Commissioner Tipton brought it up, about doing a constitutional county resolution in the last meeting. Did we? I haven't seen anything else on that since. I don't know if it's something we could get drafted up just to, I don't know if it even makes sense to, anything has any teeth anymore, but to go along with that. I know we talked about it. I don't know if we want to go anywhere with it or if I'm miss.
I just want to make sure we're talking about the same one. That's the one that we joined, that, that group, that's $2,000 membership fee, I think it is.
No.
It's something different.
I don't know if the membership fee, but I just, in light of what was going on, I thought that was something that maybe we should address. Could have been the same thing as Elko County, wouldn't have to be.
Yeah, I know. I think you're thinking of something different, Dave. I think this is just more of a resolution, basically saying we're, we're following the constitution in Humboldt County. We're not, you know, these mandates are unconstitutional and.
Yeah, so I'll just need to follow up with, like Elko, when we originally started talking about this, they have not done a resolution like you're referring to. But what they did do is they did join the constitutional sheriffs organization. And again, it was two grand, 2,500 bucks and you get like some books that this guy wrote and some decals. In my, I'm just giving you my opinion. I don't, I don't see what it buys you. It doesn't buy you any clout or anything like that. But I think I like your idea of a constitutional resolution saying we follow a certain guide like that. Makes sense to me. But I wouldn't want to give two grand so a guy can promote his book. That's just my opinion.
I don't agree with that either. I don't think that we need to get the county into something like that. But if we could research out a document or create our own document that says, hey, we're, we're Humboldt County and we, we follow the constitution as our, you know, as our way and our laws. We operate off the constitution.
I can do some research. There was got a little bit of it. That there's a group of counties that are declaring themselves constitutional counties.
Yes. Five of them.
So it wasn't just the sheriff's department about it. There's five in Nevada so far. Yeah, Lander was one of them, I think, that did that. And I can talk to Bert about that.
I don't know. My gut tells me that we probably should put this on a special meeting and get it officially taken care of and as soon as possible. It was thrown from the health board to the county commission. Now it's our job to act on it.
I will say one thing, that we did stay in step with what we had been doing with the health board. As I went through and read the minutes, they, just about what was said today by Stringham as far as him not wanting masks and everything else. There he did that some time ago. So I was going to bring that up if there was any need for it today.
It's been pretty consistent along those lines throughout. Okay, let me say the other things. I got to bring the assessor backup thing after we meet with Tim and get some explanation. I got to bring that back. The public hearing that you set to today, I'll bring that back. Probably not September 7. It's going to be later in September.
Yeah, second meeting.
I guess Commissioner Hill again throwing it out there. I'll be traveling Thursday and Friday if you're thinking of something that quick, but I'll be traveling to rodeo.
I gotta go to a funeral in Boise.
So.
I don't think I'll be here on the summer.
I could try to jump on Zoom, but.
How about if I do this? I'll have Michelle ping you guys later today about some dates next week when you might be available.
I'm available. I just took my little vacation.
Rodeo's starting, so all my weekends are booked. Yeah, I'm covered for several papers.
Oh, that's right. That's right. She's going to be here. Yeah.
That's a good thing or a bad thing.
Right.
Have you heard anything come out of like Superior or anything?
Well, I don't know. I don't know. We've had a big uptick in our cases here.
Would they be related?
They don't tell you that. I mean, it's our business.
Can't tell.
Well, that's unfortunate because that's important.
Are we ready to move on here? Get to public comment?
Public comment?
Okay.
Before we do public comment.
We're everybody out. We've lost everybody.
Yeah. So the last item is public comment. Is there anybody in the public who would like to provide comment? If you're on the phone, press star six to unmute yourself.
I have nobody on here.
Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned.